My call to order, the February 13th, 2021 Board Work Session of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. I'm going to ask Mr. Lindy if he would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Ms. Wanger, please call the roll.
The State is present.
Power here.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. President?
Present.
Mr. President?
Here.
President Jim?
Here. Well, very lively responses there, so that means it's gonna be a good day, right? Okay, so we have two hours today. Today, as you all know, is sort of a follow-up of our previous, at our sort of initial discussions around envisioning CPS for next year. And I'm not gonna say a whole lot, is the superintendent, we are pleased to have a facilitator, so the superintendent's going to just take it from here and introduce our facilitator.
All right. So, good afternoon, board members. We're really excited today to be able to relive the leadership team, to be able to hear your vision for new CPS. Just as a reminder to the public, this year is the second year of implementation of our strategic plan, and it has dramatically changed as a result of COVID. And potentially, next year is the last year for CPS. So this session will help the administration to really be able to develop the priorities and the strategies and the measures that the board has before. I would like to bring your attention to you. There, Colonel Oliver, there, do they have you at their CPS? So what we would like to do is to give you, just for your edification, two documents, Strategic Plan Scorecard from 2019, 2020, and then 2020, 21. And you'll see that this is the scorecard that we saw in the first year of implementation. So if you want to just give your preview in terms of the state planning for the full year, and then for this full year, obviously, there are some modifications to this based upon the pandemic. So many of the items under the student-centered decision-making goal area, you will see that there isn't a designation in terms of red-yellow ring because the state testing that is normally offered is not offered through, or it will be offered this year, but it won't count in terms of a report. So you can see where we are as they're like these, I think they're 28 strategic plan measures. You will see that there are some other areas that we have been able to make significant movement in terms of career credentials. I'm just gonna highlight a couple of areas, as well as increasing the number of days for our preschool students. And then on their safety and health and safety, you'll see that we've been able to make some improvements as it relates to our alternative learning standard, as well as our social and emotional work with a three designated schools. So you can see where there are yellow areas and then areas in which we are showing that we're in agreement and a couple that we are off-target in terms of progress. So, for example, I'll highlight one area under growth. You'll see that this year, we did not increase our enrollment by 400, over 400 kids. Where normally, that's what we had been doing, about 400 students a year, a value school a year. So again, this represents 2019, 2020, and then 2020, 21. On February the 22nd, the executive session, I will be bringing to the board as part of my review and update, a set of measures that are aligned to the five goal areas outlining the viable few. So that's an update as it relates to the measures. The last thing that I'll say before I introduce our facilitator is that the leadership team, we have been engaged in the exercise of old shore, new shore, which we're gonna talk through in just a couple moments with our staff. And our staff members are very excited to hear from the board after today in terms of your vision. One thing that the staff members said very clearly yesterday is that what they need in order to do their work and move forward is a clear vision from the board and strategic direction. They want clarity, so that then we can implement and come up with strategies aligned to the board's vision and priority. With that, so that we can spend the majority of the time while working on this, introduce Marina Hopson. She does, she's worked with us over many, many years. Actually, Marina was a resource coordinator a very, very long time ago for Woodbridge High School. She then went on to do a partnership. And Marina has been instrumental in our work with quality improvement, our relationship with Tolton Hospital, as well as our partnerships around tutoring, just a whole host of things. But Marina has done a lot of extensive work, a years' worth of work on facilitation. So with that, we're gonna turn it over to Marina.
So, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everybody. Here with you guys, and we're gonna jump right in, because we have a lot to get through in a very limited amount of time. So, I wanna bring this and remind us, I know you guys walk, breathe, sleep this, that the vision for Cincinnati, the vision for the district, the Cincinnati Public Schools could be a community that ensures equitable access to world-class education, unleashing the potential of every student. And then the mission, we educate all students with rigor and care and a culture of excellence to develop engaged citizens who are prepared for life. So I'm the one, for everyone to quickly, I know faces, so if you just quickly introduce yourselves. And as you're doing that, I'm gonna chart and capture what are you hoping to accomplish during our time together. And then, if you use a post-it note and write down your thoughts, what crossroads are you currently facing? So we'll chart this, but we'll start here with introduction. So, Ms. Bolton, you want to start?
Thank you, yes. On the board, I'm hoping to accomplish today a broad vision that will give the administration enough direction to be able to think in terms of how to spend a third year of strategic plan, how to build the next annual budget, and then also think about what the next CPS looks like.
Bolton?
Clear vision? Sure.
Clear vision of the next CPS, yes. And it might be the same vision, but on the CPS somewhere along the line. Is that what you want, Bolton?
Yeah, I'm glad you're in there.
Oh, gosh. Go on, say yes.
I'll go. I'm Mike Morowski, and I'd like to get out of our time today, if possible, in two hours, is be able to provide the administration some clearer, I mean, precisely what the superintendent was saying, clearer direction or roadmap to where we're headed now in light of the past year. Strategic plan is great, and it's been moving along, obviously, there's been a lot of unforeseen circumstances. It required pivoting, so I think they deserve a clear direction. And also, for the second one, with the crossroads, it says that you are facing, I assume that means it's trying to ask personally?
Yes.
I didn't hear that.
For the second part that says, crossroad you are facing, I just wanted to be clear that meant the district, like you specifically, Carolyn.
Sure. I should talk to you, it's helpful in getting increased clarity. Hang on a second. Oh, man, it's Ben, sorry.
So you just want it helpful? In getting clarity?
Increasing clarity.
Thank you, Marina. Yes?
And I'm Melanie.
Hi.
And whatever we do today, I want a commitment from the board that we will move forward as a team. Now, with the rest, I'm set.
Yes?
Yes, hi, I'm Carolyn, and it's ironic, because right as you were saying that, I wrote down "move forward." And I think I agree with Melanie, that moving forward as a team towards some new ideas and innovation that will help us to reach our goals in the final days of the strategic plan.
I'm good. Move forward towards new ideas and innovations? Innovation that helps us in the final round of the strategic plan?
Yes.
Okay. Then, yes?
Hello, I'm Ryan. And mine would be that we are able to amalgamate seven ideas into a common vision that will unite us and also allow the administration to do their work through a common understanding.
Amalgamate?
Amalgamation. Unification, synthesis, yeah. Yeah, when you flip turning, that's a lot of alignment of itself, I think.
Okay, so, seven ideas?
Into one, that will unite this board, so that the administration is trying to serve that one voice versus seven individual.
The wrong answer is me. For me, today is about allowing the district to be creative, yet realistic in ways that we can realign the strategic plan, because I am a true component of us executing better lots of things on the strategic plan, being a part of the creation of it as partners. So for me, it's really allowing the team to be creative, and as a board, us allowing them to create activity, but to also be realistic.
Does that, did you also have supportive in yours?
No, but that sounds, I like it, we can put it in.
No, I just want to make sure. We, as a board, we do.
It's a continuous support of the district, so we can put that in here based on their execution.
So, one of the things, if you guys hear as each other was hearing, there's some things that popped up. You guys hear comments?
Unification.
Yeah, unification, well, if you guys hear.
Clarity.
Yeah. But offering guidance, guidance to the administration. Whether it's clarity, guidance. Anything else?
Or.
Or.
Strategic.
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 Our vision.
Yeah. I heard creative, and innovation. Anything else? Clear direction, roadmap, hopeful clarity, coming in, and forward. You're all good? A few ones can just forward. So just keep all those things in mind as we move forward. That's so appropriate, because that's what we're gonna talk about. And I will go back, does someone want to share something in the crossroads, just real quick, maybe? There should be volunteers to share what you found for the crossroads, equal education?
I mean, I think it's maybe just so basic, but I think we're facing a crossroads of educational competitiveness and a pandemic.
Anyone else want to share?
I would take that off of that and add to it, then what does that look like? What does the future of public education look like? Because I think it's always gonna, it will never look like it did before, March of 2020. So what will that look like? Again, kind of basic, but it's, it looks obvious to me. Come on, Ryan.
Hi, I think coming out of this very, very chaotic and fearful environment, I think, crossroads is that I don't want us to be so fearful we don't think big enough, or creative and creatively enough. I think that last year before it all happened, I think we would have been thinking much bigger. And now we have to actually really do think much bigger. My crossroads is how we're gonna think big enough to really have an impact, really make something different.
Anyone else? Yep. I'll go ahead.
I see during the way that our education is being, our instructions being handled during the pandemic, that we're falling back into a system of haves and have-nots. And we fought very hard to get out of that, and I see us falling back into it. So we really need to make decisions based on equity. And equity has, let's say, not been the priority in some of our decision-making.
I'm not gonna take it back off of you, Melanie, I was gonna say, applicable opportunity, more applicable opportunity.
I was gonna add, I don't know, it's more of the, how do we manage the realities of what we can do and the limitations of what we think we want to do?
Any others?
Okay. I might say something about building the district, whatever, a vision, around our most progressive board policies. We tend to build around reality and what we can afford. I think it could be important to figure out a few of those policies that are really incredibly progressive and would make us change some things.
I think that's kind of a little bit of what I was trying to say, but you said it more specifically. I think, yeah, so.
Yeah, to make an effort to build the next CPS or across this room, get to the next shore using some of our most progressive board policies, that are already written, already there, that often reality makes them, we have to get through the day. And there are some really hot to try, there are some policies. All right. So I'll take your, hold on a minute, hold on to your time, post-it notes, and I'll take them and I'll put them up here. So, I'm gonna bring everyone's attention to the old shore, new shore.
Let's go, this was done with the organization that I was with, and we were going through a huge transition. And so I want to give credit to Lucky Davidson, this is her work that she came up with. But as you see, you can see here, I hate having my back doors, you can, so you have the old shore, right? And on the old shore, you have plus and release, once sufficient, but it's no longer, kind of rest in peace, you let it go. And then you have this transition zone in here. You have grace, patience, undertone, curiosity. You have some people rowing along, alone, two people in a boat, someone with their oars up here. You have thunderstorm up here, clouds blowing there. There's experimenting going on, you have an octopus, have someone that's on the new shore throwing out, sometimes you might have to throw out a life raft for someone. In the transition zone, you acknowledge your emotions, the instability, but also the opportunity. You have to remember that you know more than you think you do. And on the new shore, it's the beginnings of all human understanding, but it can be untidy. Right? And when you think of, the undertone is an underlying threat of disaster beneath the surface of everyday life. So as you're transitioning, you know, that's going on. An octopus might just feel like, sometimes you feel like the life is being squeezed out of you. Or you're trying to move forward, but you know, one arm is pulling you back. Here, these fins, we don't know if they're sharks or dolphins. So you might, you know, in this trend, there'll be sharks that are out to bite you, but then there's dolphins that are your friends. So as we work through today, we're gonna use the five goals, starting with student-centered decision-making, as the anchor for this work. And you're gonna work through this, and we're gonna think about the old shore, what are you gonna release and let go, and what you want your new shore to look like. Make sense? Any thoughts? All right. So, as we begin to work with that, these are the five questions. And they're in your agenda also, but I wanted to write, pronounce, read. Five questions to ask yourself, so as you're thinking about student-centered decision-making, what comes up for you today? What do you need to bless and release? What do you need to carry you forward? And then what new things do you want to help you in this? So I'll give you guys just a minute, so you can kind of think through that. So under student-centered decision-making, we put students first. We will ensure students are at the center of all decision-making to create equitable educational opportunities and unmatched experiences that will deliver results. So when you think about that, what comes up for you? What do you need to bless and release? What do you need to carry that work forward? And what new things in that area, innovations, do you want to implement?
So Marina, a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
As we think about clarity for the administration, what was really helpful when we did this exercise was to just, for a moment, focus on what will we not carry forward to the new CPS and project? That was helpful, and that's something that'll be helpful to give us clarity. So a quick example is, we don't need snow days anymore. Because if you have your technology at home, then you can move forward with instruction on what would have been a snow day.
Some people would discipline.
That makes you clean up. Okay, so, we'll take them one at a time, if you can use your post-its. So are you guys clear on the liberal book? I can see some in the eyes, are you guys clear?
I'm not entirely clear, I think the superintendent's example is very helpful. I had assumed, when you were starting, Laura, what do we not want to carry forward? I thought what you were gonna say is, which of these do we not want to carry forward? But then you said, "snow day," I was like, oh, that's actually helpful, because maybe I was thinking in the wrong direction.
So just to show your exercise, however, I think that if you limit yourself to this piece of paper, it may limit us in terms of thinking bigger about the work, or things that we just don't want to carry forward, that's not here.
So inclusive of, but not limited to.
That's how I would suggest we think about it.
Thank you.
So when you guys think, in your strategic plan, as a board, so when you think about your role as a board, we will ensure students are at the center of all decision-making to create equitable educational opportunities and unmatched experiences that deliver results. So whether it's, when you think about the district, you think about the students, families, when it comes to student-centered decision-making, what needs to stay, what do you need to leave behind? What needs to stay behind? Then it's a brick and mortar district. Okay, so writing on your post-it. Like there are a lot of them? Yeah. Because what we're gonna do is, we're gonna physically put those, everything that we're gonna leave behind, we're gonna put it on the old shore, when it comes to student-centered thinking.
So if you want an idea posted?
Yeah.
Idea proposed?
Idea proposed, yeah.
Are the colors significant?
Mm-hmm, no color significant.
So, I just have a question. Like, using the one that Ms. Bolton just gave, I would, seems that would be like undergrowth. So, like, the student-centered decision-making, it seems like a big umbrella, high level, that... Do you want more of how we're defining that? Or the specific examples?
Give an example of what you're thinking.
Well, that, and I'm thinking like, I don't think we have technically defined what student-centered decision-making means as a board. I mean, I think we have an interpretation, maybe, what that means.
It's a strategic plan, but that's what you're reading from, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess you represent what Eve said, but it's a brick and mortar, is actually building stuff, but it's not really a founder student center. And so it goes back to Ben's question, are we talking about this list, which is a founder student center? Or are we talking about what, you know, being more, I guess, broader?
So I would say, just in context of maybe how to frame this, I could be wrong, but I think what Ms. Bolton said really has to do with programming, and that we will no longer have a system in which the only way you receive instruction is in a physical building. She wants to leave that behind.
She wants to leave that behind, which goes to programming.
Okay. Does that make sense? So she wants to offer more options other than being in a physical space at a specific cost on the Old Shore.
Yes, that's why she's superintendent.
So let's get down and put it that way.
You have another one?
What's that one?
Leave behind that rigorous curriculum is exclusive. Any others? The, my.
My name is Mrs. Bolton.
No, and my, the volume of student achievement outcomes from nine to three, say more behind, you want to leave that?
So I'm, at the risk of sounding like a record to my friend in the room, just moving from having so many different things that we're trying to keep track of to a very small number of things we think are most important.
Okay. Can we put that on the New Shore?
Yeah, the converse of that on the New Shore.
Oh, the converse, yeah, can you put the?
Sure.
Any others?
I would say, okay, I may be this way. And I think someone talked about the realities of our policies. And so I think about some of the creative policies we have, and we really need to dig deep to understand what they mean and how they get applied in times of student-centered decisions.
So what do you leave, so what needs to be left behind with that statement?
Oh, gosh. I don't know.
To think about it.
Okay, yeah, I'll think about that.
What else needs to be left behind? Will you guys think about?
Can I, I mean, can I put this out? I guess it's maybe just the ambiguous definition? I mean, because I think about at work, we use customer-centric. We have four quality measures we're trying to meet. It's really specific. I think we see student-centered as a based on academics first, and then this, and this, and this. So.
Ambiguous thinking, I think that's a good place to put it.
So you need to leave behind ambiguous thinking.
More clarity in our definition.
Any others?
I have the brick and mortar, because the way I love to use. Obviously, we'll have brick and mortar, but it's clear that we can offer other options, and then for some kids, it may work better. And then I put punitive discipline, which we've already moved away from a great deal and have a lot in the works. But I always think we can push the envelope under store to practice justice, et cetera.
Any others? I want to leave behind that we're only a regional or national leader with student achievement. I want us to think that we're international leader. Maria, I have one, and that's a pretty silly.
This is really focusing on doing things well versus doing a lot of things.
So what do we leave behind?
Too many programs, so. Too many programs.
Anything else? So that's what we need to bless and release. That's what we're leaving behind. You guys can keep writing them as they come to you. What do you bless, do you need to carry, move you forward? So you think about these statements here, right? So we are only a regional or national leader in student achievement, not a brick and mortar district. Rigorous curriculum is exclusive. Punitive discipline. So when you think of these and others, what do you need to move forward? So that's the New Shore.
Maria, would this be an example of like when the superintendent was asking me to put the converse on the other side? This is now the time to do that?
Yeah, that's the time to do that, this is the New Shore. This is a leave behind? Leave behind high schools of choice, more quality, neighborhood. Options? All right. No, that's okay. New Shore. So this is the Old Shore. Come on, people.
Yeah, I mean, I think in that idea of the ambiguity, and I didn't mean that just even within this group, but I don't even know if all of our stakeholders are aligned in many ways. And so I think that the Old Shore is ambiguous, and forward, we have our stakeholders aligned to a common understanding and description. So everyone's working together.
Can you write that down? So this was the flowers, too many programs. And then on the New Shore, enhance quality of programs.
One was Jacob Altrich's master. It's like, we're Jacob Altrich.
Okay.
For, and so to speak.
So what would it look like? What would that look like?
Identify the programs that we're doing well and enhance them. First, we need to emphasize them.
Okay, so.
Some of them are not doing as well, and that's why I said too many.
Okay.
And monitoring and measuring and things like that.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we captured exactly what you were thinking. Any others? What do we need to bring to the New Shore? He. Oh, please, please do. More accountability for professional performance. And there's something that everybody calls dyed, which is dismantle institutional racism in education. That's a New Shore.
New Shore. Both of these are New Shore.
And Maria, we're just, we're trying to limit ourselves to, for the moment, to goal one.
Yes, yes, we're going to, we're going to do each one. And you guys, these goals are just, these goals are an anchor. Just think of the goals as an anchor, because there's so much information, there's so many different directions. But this is just a guide with an anchor, so don't get.
Our friend Jeremy is fond of using a bridge analogy that a lot of us understand. So we need a big bridge. If we're going to not have reliant brick and mortar as much. And then regarding like historic effects on it, we're going to need training, staffing, and then this is just a catch-all. But we're going to need money to do everything. But training and staff, or and/or staffing, particularly as it relates to getting away from punitive discipline.
Here's one. Student-centered decision-making means students have to be involved in. So involving students that are regular. Which I think we're doing in part.
Character development. For who?
For student, for the students. While we need the role models too, so I suppose that would be very important for the teachers' role models to also be at least versed in good character qualities.
You want to add that? You want to add that to this? So that, yeah. For student and staff. Mr. Mison?
Yeah, I, this one maybe is a little basic, but just clarity in our process for decision-making.
So that needs to be on the New Shore?
Yeah. It's one thing to say that we're doing student-centered decision-making, but define how we make those decisions.
So just the place where some of the great things you all talked about in January might come out, like I heard someone mention a second shift school or a night school, which gets to not have this brick and mortar. So just a thought of some of the really great things you all talked about a couple weeks ago.
A new way to organize instructional time. Take a leak in here. All right, innovations. Any new innovations that you want to bring?
That's second, that's second shift school, the next year.
Second shift school. Outdoor education.
Yay, yeah, 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 this is good. Already done a network ready.
Yep. Any other innovations, thoughts?
I think furthering our career training to match up with job outlook opportunities, i.e. healthcare.
Why don't you add local job opportunities? Is that good?
Yeah, like this, yeah. This is a good clarification, I was talking about the chamber, the presentation of outlook.
Any others?
Because it's really along the superintendent's, but I put non-traditional learning models, which incorporates all of what we were talking about. Also incorporation of Black history to the curriculum as requirement and practical life skills.
Great. So.
Recruitment of staffing.
Recruitment of staffing? For the innovation in New Shore?
Yes.
Okay. Last, last go around. You got one?
Here you go. So increase the accountability.
Increase accountability with parents. Ms. Bolton, you said you had a number? Yes. Strategic partnerships, not transactional ones. All right. Okay. Moving to our second. So now you guys got a flow, right? So we're gonna move on. So this is what we're leaving behind. This is what we're bringing forward, which includes innovation and creative.
Is the idea that everything that gets put up there is then something that gets done?
I don't know, I'll throw it back to you guys. I know Laura had, I'd be interested in what you guys think as board members.
So our thoughts of that, we did take what we have. We don't want to cycle any creativity. We'll bring it back to you in a set of priorities for you all to look at and say, this is what we want to do, or this is not what we want to do. And then we all thought we did lay it out over years, and say, this is your one, two, three. But not those described, that's, we still want to cycle your.
No, please don't. Does that answer your question? Yeah.
Well, we disagree, that's fine. Some of you, what were you saying? No. You know, I just, I think the thing that. I think it creates, it can create a challenging situation for the administration if the understanding is, we have to do everything that gets thrown up there. You know, and I like the idea that the administration would develop an opinion about like, what you think from this is the most critical, middle, you know, terrible idea, you know? And so as long as that's a part of the process that you were just describing, I think that sounds great.
I didn't know in front of which you're thinking when you asked that. So that helps. Okay. I'm good, I just didn't know which one we were doing next. This one?
State policy.
I'm good. Do you? I'm good.
Can I help you with that?
We survived COVID, and we survived stress, because of death by a COVID.
Well, we'll just blame Murawski, so. I'm one of those. All right. Okay. Health and safety. So we're doing the same process. So if you guys need to stick it up, what do you need to leave behind on the Old Shore? So under health and safety, safety is, we focus on personal well-being. We will commit to putting the safety, physical, social, and emotional health of our students, staff, and partners at the forefront of everything we do. So when you think about health and safety, what needs to be left behind? I've, this is a further statement, I think that that health and safety of our students is not part of job one. Not part of. It is not part, it's not part of job one. We have, I mean, our job one is instruction and achievement, but, and we've been bringing along all the other stuff, right? This is part of job one in the, on the New Shore. Leave, leave, leave that behind, yes. That's a big, that's a big.
Say that again, leave.
That, to leave behind the idea that the health and safety of our kids is not part of job one.
Big idea behind.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So our primary job is to educate students.
But this is part and parcel of it.
But in order to do that, we have to recognize that's, that's, that's a big, that's a big, decades-long shift for us to be thinking that.
Yeah.
So it's like.
Yeah, and this is not the district or anything, but that the world views mental health and well-being kind of in an old-world definition. You kind of handle it after versus it's something you do proactively before something happens. So, so I guess leave behind the old-world definition of mental health and well-being.
The pandemic most definitely has brought that to light, so even more. It was there before, but even more. And then the state has reviewed CLC partnerships and eliminate ineffective, superhilarious programs, right? Guys follow that?
Yeah.
Okay. What else, what else do we need to leave behind?
I have a question mark on mine, because it's absolutely up for debate, but it's come up a lot the past year, which is the police and schools idea. I'm not saying or suggesting right now we do away with that. I have suggested, and others have too, that we look at it or audit it, so to speak. So that's why it's a question mark, it's not saying do away with. But along the lines of punitive discipline, we talk about health and safety, I think it's an important thing to talk about. And I have my other shores, which may just sort of buoy that, if it's okay. Would be like continued investment in the PBIS work, and then the universal design learning. Ms. Bolton actually has a book she is showing today, tying any anti-racist work with UDL, which I think you'll be interested to read.
Remind me, UDL?
Sorry, universal design learning. Essentially, your spaces are conducive, you know, to learning and encouraging.
I have expanded SCL for students, but I want to be inclusive of staff, especially during the pandemic, and how we work together as a school. And I think our team, if we're well, would help and provide support to our teachers. But I think it needs to be, that should be on the New Shore.
You say NCL, then?
NCL.
Anything else, you guys? Anything else that was either you need to leave behind or bring to the New Shore?
Well, kind of building on that, I mean, I think it's like we're in the huge transition right now. I think pandemic would have, of course, caused it to maybe go a little faster, but there's a big transition, transformation happening with employee engagement, which fits kind of to the overall mental health, but just the engagement. And so I think the realization of that plan would be on the New Shore.
Okay.
So, yeah. This kind of ties to something somebody else said, but around our partners. I think for the New Shore, it is increased or build in some accountability or accountability for partner involvement.
Okay.
It's like, we have tons of partners, but are they giving us what we want? So that would be mine for New Shore.
New Shore. Any others? Any other things that rose to the top, you guys, as you? Any other things that rose to the top, you guys, as you, as we've been in a pandemic state, and you think about the safe and healthy of students and the system, anything else that comes to mind?
Not sure, this, I think of this way particularly with the mental health, but also with vision, sight, more individualized, developed health diagnostics for our kids.
Oh, I was gonna tell you.
I want to figure to know where the board might be around school nurses, having registered nurses in all of our buildings. Is that something that we want on the new shore? That's one thing we want. So I'm just thinking like vegetarian items, do we have to deal with the fun?
I think that's new for for broadly determining what a school nurse get, I mean.
We limit it to school nurses? Would we look at NPs?
I mean, maybe not have an NP at every school because we couldn't afford it, but you know, that certainly would, I think, be a cost-effective way to, to get a higher level of service because we certainly can't afford doctors.
So, yeah. The only time I brought it up is because we are able to pay for through care, I guess? Wellness, and before this year, that wasn't existing, so is that something you want to carry forward?
You want to share out what you had?
Sure, I said that in the new shore, this, that we have a COVID learning environment that makes more than 90% of parents and teachers satisfied.
Now you are dreaming.
I was just gonna say, he can put the measure down there.
I'd be hoping that 80, you know, like if we need to go 80 instead of 90, but something north of 75.
Anything else?
Yeah. Then just maybe think of something. That's good. I want to leave behind deficit assessment as guiding our planning. And I want to deepen or expand our assets. Measure, that's just a whole other way of thinking.
Okay. We're getting ready to move on. Unless there's any more?
One more.
One more. Is it a new shore or old shore?
Yeah.
Want to share out what you're thinking?
Right. We kind of lost this with the pandemic, but this is important, that we continue to work on safe routes to school.
Agreed.
I remember we had a meeting about that.
It was like the top of the agenda, health and safety, and then boom.
Anything else?
I just, Melanie, I'm trying to think of the leaders of our times for when we are back. But I feel like that's already on the, on the docket, so it's
But we want to capture it here.
You know, I think the, this, the whole idea, this office of inclusion that's been kind of talked about. That, I mean, I think it's race, racial equity and really everything else. You know, I, just recently, I've heard a couple of issues even about some of the LGBT youth. Like issues again that I thought were all gone, and so it's like this whole inclusion umbrella. We create a space that all kids and staff feel welcomed and valued. Because these suicides and all that, that feeling of less than.
All right. Okay, so we're gonna, we'll we'll get that.
I like that, and that came up in one of my, the magazine from my college, is that they're really spending a great deal of time and effort trying to create a welcoming environment, whether it's program or whether it's spaces, whether it's communications correspondence. That seems to be a real need and for all of this, so to have it all thrown together.
For you. That's really good, welcoming environment. I like that. Okay, can someone, as I'm getting this off, can someone read goal number three in the description?
Under goal three, community engagement and influence. We will create unmatched opportunities for meaningful student, family, and community engagement that positively impacts students' outcomes and inspire collaboration.
Okay. So when you guys think about that, what, what do we want to leave behind? What's going to stay on the old shore? As you're thinking about the new CPS?
I have a few suggestions, I don't
What do we need to leave behind when you're thinking about community and influence?
I think the, the leave behind is an inconsistent definition of our stakeholders.
An inconsistent definition of our stakeholders. Fairly worn.
Well, I mean, I think like the converse, and so, and then, so I think we just, what we need to have is clearly identify, and then we have a process to engage them into our decision-making, our systems, et cetera. Because I think what we have is a variety of groups telling us things. And like a foundation will say, oh, here's some feedback from this group. Look, it's not consistent, we don't know the quality of the data, the information. And just having a consistent process, here's how we engage parent stakeholders. Here's how we engage employee stakeholders. Here's how we engage student stakeholders. And that we build that into when we make a decision. We say, okay, the stakeholders we need here from are this one and this one, and we bring that in as we're making decisions versus it coming from a thousand places.
So what I hear is on the old shore, we need to leave behind the
Easy meal packaging.
Yeah.
Yeah, so like
Easy meal packaging.
Easy meal packaging.
I wrote inconsistent engagement. It's not the same thing, I'm like
You said inconsistent engagement?
Yeah, I think Ryan's talking about deeper
Ryan's talking about process.
Yeah. Yeah. It's kind of the definition and then the process for including them. I mean, yes, into decisions, but like how do we engage them into things that we want to communicate? How do we engage them on kind of what's coming and what's next? Or enroll them on
So you have the old shore and the new shore on one?
Together.
Together. So can you do that anywhere? Can you please, yeah. Just do the bottom one?
Right, the bottom.
Any others?
Yeah.
I, I think this is consistent with what Ryan and Pam was saying, but I just wanted to check. I was going to put something there about like the way we I remember some early parent surveys from like the summer, where there was a very high number of people who responded, but it was really hard to tell like how representative a number that was. And I think that's where I'm like inherent, what you're saying is that there's just a more deliberate and reliable process for gathering input. Is that what you're saying?
But yours is more, but you don't care.
No, I think it's totally captured.
Okay, anyone else? What else do we, when you think of community engagement and influence? You think about the new CPS? And, you know, in the revisiting process? What do you want to leave behind? What do we need to bring forward? Miss Bolton?
I have leave behind that surveys are advice. Because they're not, it's just expressions of interest, but and demographics don't matter. Like if you get 500 to say yes, but it's same old 500. And then new shore expands school site engagement of parents.
How about that?
So leave behind that surveys are advice and demographics don't matter. And on the new shore, expands school site engagement of parents. Others?
I have two new shores.
Okay.
They might be similar. One is to begin to utilize non-traditional community venues. Things that are, we use typical stuff like news media, newspaper, but there are many more things I think I've learned in our conversations with members of certain communities that some venues work better. So that is new. And then another one is improving communication around our narrative. That's kind of, it's like being ahead, getting ahead of the story and preparing the community for what's coming and not responding in crisis. So I don't know if you can interpret that? So one, one of those could be, the second one could be leave behind responding in crisis mode or some, I don't know. I'll leave it up to you.
Okay, because you didn't put, you didn't, let's see, let me is this the crisis mode one? Let me see what this is.
That's non-traditional.
Yeah. So non-traditional readings, that non-traditional community venues.
Yeah, though, I mean, I think the one she just said, I think is very similar, just offense versus defense.
That's the new shore.
Yeah.
Food, communication, offense versus defense. Process for engaging stakeholders, clarity. And definitions for more, that's still, that's the new shore too, right? Okay.
I kind of turned it into, yeah, we phrased it.
Hey, this is an old shore.
Okay.
You want to share? Make people come to us and our meetings because that attracts just particular demographics. That, as Jones said, we have to create ways and venues that will open up communication with, with parts of the community that, you know, just they just don't communicate the way we've been expecting them to communicate.
Okay.
So was one of those in there, Ryan? One, because I think there's something in there that is really more specific to the board. And we talked about it once, was that, did you put that up there about our board today?
Clarity is
The board or boards?
They put them
Okay, gotcha.
Board assumes responsibility.
Want to share out what you have?
I have, old shore is that CPS is a system of schools. And new shore, CPS is a school system. That's also some generational intellectual thing of CPS.
Anything else? Anything else when you guys think about?
Okay, I'll I'll say, I'm just going to make them up there.
Okay.
And I mean, it's similar to what a lot of everybody else is saying. I just think the weather, and whether it's true or not, it's, I think certainly perceived that so just saying, whatever, it's said a different way, I think, but that we go to the communities for input when we need something. As opposed to having more consistent touchpoints. And we each have our own consistent touchpoints. And I think it's what Melanie, probably, Carolyn about the unified piece, like we each have our own consistent touchpoints. But like as a whole, I don't know, we do, i.e., we don't ever have the community come present a board. The administration presents a board, which is fair, which is good, it should. But I envision, and we talked about it too, too, when I first ran the board, what if the community presented? So, again, whether it's perceived or not, I think people think we go to them when we have something we want to put on, which isn't really community engagement, it's feedback.
Right. I was trying to figure, oh, it was on the check-in question about seven ideas into one that would unite the board in service to one voice.
Yeah. I think all
Yeah.
I mean, I, I feel as if all six of my board colleagues do awesome community, we all engage with our communities in different ways, every single day, especially the past year.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Any others? When you guys think about community engagement and influence? Leaving behind of what we need to take to the new shore? Or any innovative ideas, any other ideas when you think about community engagement?
I think Carolyn already mentioned that for student center, that this community engagement, we leave behind where we don't find out from students. On the new shore, find out from students, but I think that got covered in the
Okay.
I, I think, you know, and I've sent President Jones kind of the draft of that, the whole, that assignment that I was given that we pushed off a little bit. But a lot of it to me was crystallizing what we define as community. And I think identifying key partner organizations that, that we deliberately include and proactively update by going to their meetings and going to their exams. But also understanding that staff is part of community. And, you know, I think sometimes we have to engage that body versus assuming that other groups are going to be engaging them for us. In that, so many of the staff that I know are parents. And sometimes their role as parent, they don't feel as getting hurt as much because, well, I'm not asked because, you know, you're, you're going out here, but I'm a teacher, and you're asking for parents, but I'm a teacher, I'm not allowed to present. So is there a way to more formally kind of designate our stakeholders? And create that kind of two-way dialogue?
So you envision what? Then your idea, I mean, what would that look like?
That we crystallize who those groups are and are very deliberate in how and where we plug them into our processes and our decision-making. Again, going back to that proactive, that we're going out to them versus waiting for them to come to us when they're dissatisfied or want to influence us.
Okay. Moving on to the next goal four.
You know, and thinking about what I said about school system and stuff, probably it shouldn't be an engagement, but that's what I saw, it probably should be in the next one. That optimizing whatever. But that's, I mean
I would leave it, if I may. I would be with there too, because again, another thing I think I've highlighted this past year is that it is pretty, it feels pronounced that we are, at least a lot of people in the community, we're a system of schools and not a school system. And a lot, a lot of folks all over the country, I don't think that's unique to CPS at all, I'm just saying it takes guts to do it. And I appreciate this board to put it up there because I think all across the country, people have realized you know, this pandemic has forced them to realize they are in the same group with a whole lot of other people they may not have a lot in common with.
Right.
And just being able to worry about what's going on, we weren't doing it, as it's been, it's easy to scale.
Number four? Number four. Someone want to read goal number four in the description?
We will intentionally we will intentionally design data in form customer focus and user-friendly processes to create efficient and effective systems.
You guys need to take a quick stand-up break? We'll keep working, but if you need a stand, stand.
This is from my man Jeremy, he need a bigger bridge. We need to get Jeremy a bridge.
So this is on the new shore?
Yeah, get Jeremy a bridge.
Say more about that, Mike.
I can't, I don't understand it. No, we, we, to be, I'm just kidding, to, to, I do understand it. To be, to be able to do more e-instruction with students at home and like school-based instruction, as opposed to you're in school, you're at Cincinnati Digital, you're at Clark Digital or Clark School, or you're at Withrow Digital or Withrow in School. It's hard to do right now because the analogy, if I may, is our bridge can't have that many cars on it, or you can't have a certain amount of cars. But we had a bigger bridge or a stronger bridge, we have more cars. Our bridge is kind of like the Brent Spencer right now. And we need like a, a Sidney Harbor Bridge. I took it one step further.
Ryan?
Having building on that, and I guess with all that internet capability and all that, but just determining a platform. Yes. That we utilize, that is embraced by teachers, students, and the families. One platform. Yeah.
So this is new shore?
Yeah, and I also put new shore, we optimize our transportation spend. I know everybody's working towards that, but it just is, uh, such a huge system.
What you guys vision, the new CPS? When you think about optimized capabilities? What do we need to leave behind? And what do we need to implement? Or what innovative ideas do you have?
We need to, uh, we need to embed a culture of optimized capabilities. And leave behind a resistance to change.
How about strengthening employee engagement? For the new shore?
Mm-hmm.
You're saying that's a key?
Say that.
You're saying that's like a key?
I probably. Strengthened. So we have it, but I think we need to do better at it.
Yeah, you need to lock your goal.
Yes, yes.
And, uh, I wonder if there's like, um, you know, EHR, electronic health record has totally transformed healthcare. Everything's now digital, you don't have the files.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, do we all, do we need a technology innovation council or something of these IT people who are changing the face of the world? That instead of me, like, being a school, you're completing 14 forms that are exact same information?
Mm-hmm.
That somehow it, like, you can update it, but you're not, filling out paperwork that has to be scanned and pushed. And I could see that being something that would be tackled by like an innovation or technology council.
So your new shore, your idea is a techno?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, you know, we, we have some pretty incredible tech entrepreneurs happening here. And then companies doing some pretty innovative things, like we do in finance, could we do that in technology?
Mm-hmm.
Where they could say, well, do you know this is available and how we're using this in the private sector, you could apply this here.
What other, any other things that you want to leave behind, who you think about? Or take to the new shore?
On the old shore, I'm going to leave behind incremental budgeting. I said that until your treasure left, so don't tell anyone. And new shore develops budgets based on results and inclusion. And new shore organize around function, not staff.
Any others?
I don't know how to word this, so I'm going to look for some help from my colleagues. We talked a lot about, again, this is one of those pre-COVID conversations that was really picking on speed, I felt like, regarding how we look at the district and or think about it. And the easiest example of how that is that, uh, all of our high schools are high schools of choice. As Walt has talked about, splitting up the district like meridians, so to speak, you have like an east and west and then, you know, your couple like in SCKA Long or whatever, that'll be district-wide. Part of that, of course, dovetails off the Ryan's point about the transportation, you know, maybe more tenable, our transportation costs could be more tenable, tattable, whatever, if we did that. So I don't really know how to word that, but just, you talk a lot about campus, um, just kind of how we see the entire, how we see, last time we talked about sort of the, the public school system versus the schools, but how we look at the district? And can we be more efficient? Is it a meridian system? Do we relook at the, every high school being a high school of choice, et cetera? So I don't, but I think, we were talking about this, and where a lot of this came from too, honestly, so I don't know if it's even maybe too heavy, but I'll just give a hundred percent high school of choice is the most tangible example I have in that.
Would you know what that?
Random.
Say this one.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
It is hard to put it down in one, one sort of word, but it would.
Okay, anything else?
Just that one. Yeah, just, this is strength in employee, employee engagement.
Okay, strengthen employee, strengthen employee engagement. On the new shore.
I have one for the old shore.
Mm-hmm.
It, it says, uh, get rid of some old norms and attitudes about, uh, related to, we've always done it this way.
Hmm.
That's a culture change.
Yeah.
It's really a culture change. People, we want people to want to work here, and if you're not willing to change, and that may not be the place for it.
Any other thoughts? Anything else you want to leave on the new, on the old shore or leave behind? Any other creative or new shore items? All right. Goal number five.
Yes.
Someone want to read goal number five and the description that's underneath it?
Growth. We celebrate the diversity of our communities and will deliver exceptional educational experiences in all neighborhoods, expanding the CPS footprint and empowering families to choose CPS as their destination school district.
Glad you got the long one. Okay. So again, the guys, you've been, you have, you have your current strategic plan, COVID happened. And then, education has changed in the way we operate. When you think about growth? What do you need to leave behind? When you think about growth, what new innovative things do we need to, um, implement? Or what do you want to bring with you to the new shore?
Kind of along the lines of what a lot of them said earlier today, but I know for me that growth affects the real estate. As an old shore, you might have growth always meant new building here for there, and new, you know, property for a new school. That growth, all sorts of things, especially we're investing in a bridge.
So, so this is old shore?
Yeah.
That growth is real estate?
Yeah. And that's it, we say, not for everybody, but for me, that's how I always saw it, growth, just like getting a building and using a new thing all year.
I want to say growing, um, our consistency with our enrollment. If we are able to, um, obtain a student in kindergarten, sustain them from kindergarten through 12th grade, then they will be a great goal for us in growth. And it's not like growing, expanding, it's being consistent and sustaining a student based on what we have to offer as a, as a district.
Did you write that down?
Oh, I don't even know, but I just said. Maybe I say sustaining students from kindergarten through 12th grade.
Okay. That's a new shore?
Repentance.
That's a new shore?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the sake of controversy, uh, old shore, um, leave behind student growth goals in enrollment, um, at least beyond what our enrollment was in 1920. Uh, new shore, replace focus on enrollment growth with a larger focus on academic growth.
Do you want to elaborate a little bit more?
Yeah, I think, I was, I was compelled by what I've heard Jen say about how we get less money for marginal students under the current funding setup in Ohio. So we make our lives more difficult, um, as we grow financially. And I think that there's a lot of work to do to get kids back to where we were last year. I think that feels important, um, but it feels more important than even getting beyond where we were last year. And I think there's all kinds of important work to do and to grow in the academic performance of kids, um, the ones we currently have, uh, before trying to add new ones. And I offer that knowing that I wasn't here when this strategic plan was written and that neither person agreed with me. Um, but in the spirit of full transparency, uh, I wanted to share where I was on this. And I'm looking forward to a, this guy.
So maybe to write something, get, get them to write something, direct opposition to that, but let's, you know, I have one, um, new shore. Reorganize the district to make more equitable access and choice for all students, because we really don't have that right now. And then leave behind the two, and I think we're working on it, the two-tier concept that there's neighborhood schools and that there's magnet schools. Somehow work our way through that.
So leave behind the two tiers.
Mm-hmm.
And new shore, reorganize, um, you have one district, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And to make more equitable access and choice.
That's what I brought.
Can I ask a question? Uh, you know, both was Mike's first one, was it real estate?
No, mine was, mine was, and again, it might just apply to me. So when I, when I, I was talking about this, the growth of the district, um, tangibly speaking, and so I was always in, in my head, that meant, oh, we're looking at properties here, we're looking at properties here, growing the district, we can grow our enrollment and our footprint, et cetera. But that, that may not be what that means anymore if we have a bigger bridge and we have different offerings.
I, I'm thinking of something a little more concrete, and it's actually written in here. Um, it, it will help us address our overcrowding problem. And it's really looking at acquiring property or renovating buildings where we can expand, deal with, uh, overcrowding. So.
And that still, and that still, um, the pandemic hasn't affected that?
It, 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 um, yes, it has affected.
Okay. Right. Okay. You want to record that, what you said, you want to share what you wrote? You can, you want me to? Yeah. Enable school populations to look like neighborhoods they are in. That's new shore?
Yes.
What does it say more about that?
Well, we have, I mean, we have neighborhood, we have neighborhood schools that are segregated, but the neighborhoods that, in which they reside are integrated.
Mm-hmm.
And it has to do with the culture of that school in a big way. I mean, in one instance that comes to mind, Evanston Academy is like, has the highest scores in the city, and it's segregated and an integrated neighborhood. Like, why does that happen? And, and then, uh, in the case of Madisonville, it's a lower achieving school in an integrated neighborhood. So it's, you know, it, it kind of goes both ways.
So I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking about that word in, in, in enable, so what would that look like? What would that look like on the new shore?
Well, if we have, if we have leadership at the school that's inclusive of the community, that goes a long way.
I think, I think it's only half the equation, because there are a lot of white people in these hip-urban neighborhoods that want nothing to do with the school and it's got all black students. And we are not going to make everybody not racist and everyone not implicitly biased. But that's half of it, I don't disagree with that. There's another half of it that's outside our control.
So I was just.
It, it does go both ways. But, but you have principals that think they're sisters of charity, that doesn't help teachers.
It's true, and no, and I do, I agree, I, I do think this is such a good discussion, I think it's like the discussion, because once you have folks who are then going into a school building, and you know, I feel like Vision 2020 really, really tried, and I'm, and I think succeeded in some respects, but it didn't, you know, no matter how much you say, look at this great program, look at this great program, you know, Hayes Porters or any rich school, I think their training house program is amazing. I've seen it personally a number of times, but a lot of the white folks downtown with kids are in the West End wanting to step foot in that building. And that's not the Hayes Porter's doing wrong. That's just, but I know it's not the same everywhere.
Hmm. So I just, the reason, the only reason why I brought up enable, because it's like, when you think about the new shore, it's like, what does that, what does that look like? Like, what is enabling to give someone the?
It's a good conversation to have.
Like, to give someone, like, giving them the authority to, to do what, like, how do you enable schools? So I just, just to give deeper thought to, on Ryan?
Yeah, I have, um, the Gilligan School on the new shore. Like, we were, we were, we were talking about this reimagined naming the CDA so that we really built it out. And then the pandemic hit, and we went into survival mode. But I think there is a huge population out there, and I, I met a group of these parents that are homeschoolers that said if there was an option that they could do this at home and have structure, they'd love to go in there for CPS. So I think that is a, you know, an audience that, and, and I think some people said, well, gosh, this worked out okay for my family, maybe I would do this long-term. So really building that as a, an option. Uh, I think new shores is, I think we have to win back the hearts and minds of the CPS families, given where we are in the pandemic. Um, I totally agree, um, you know, there's, like, our school is a magnet school, and I asked why, and they said, well, oh, it's because you're a Montessori. But then, like Pleasant Ridge, that's a neighborhood school, and it's Montessori. So the question is, do we need these magnet schools? And if we do, because not all schools are up to snuff, then what do we need to fix that? So that every school feels like a magnet school? And then I think the other is, we had a whole lot of really good work in these expansion plans pre-pandemic. And new shores, we just have to bring those to life. And in some cases, as I said to the superintendent yesterday, I think there's a whole group of people who were not, they were not even listening to anything the school board was doing. Now all of a sudden, they've been in every meeting, and they did not know that, you know, they're saying, well, why wouldn't you have already thought about expanding all that? Well, I can give you the date where it was first presented, and like five presentations after that. So I think just bringing those back to life.
Mm-hmm.
Even in a pandemic, to just get back on the offensive.
Okay, so, so, um, so live, you said live, is that right? Live into expansion plans pre-pandemic, new shore?
Yes.
Strengthen neighborhood schools of equitable magnet? New shore. Win families back to CPS, new shore. And the Gilligan School, new shore. And then, um, Ms. Towers had sustaining students, uh, K through, uh, 12th grade, and then equitable opportunities. New shore, right? Can I just follow up really quickly, so you don't think we dropped the ball on the Gilligan?
Oh, no, not at all.
Yeah, so I was in contact with Ellen Gilligan afterwards, and both, both of the board proposals, you started fundraising, and I haven't heard back from her since. Just, that's a follow-up.
I know, this one is pure, it's just plain and simple, we want our students back, so we need some real targeted recruiting strategies to get those kids back. And then, we talked about this before, I'm not quite sure how to word it, but the example that I'm going to use, I think superintendent, uh, had it was, the, maybe looking at more targeted approaches in schools, like schools that are all boy's schools or all girl's schools, or something that is, I call it culturally appropriate and relevant instruction or programming or something. I don't know what else to call it, but that's what it would be.
So on the new shore?
On the new shore.
I have a, a leave behind that CPS can't compete with burbs or charters or privates. So increase enrollment and market share. And new shore, I did say move to, in quotes, a meridian system. But to Brian's point, and, and probably part of the issue about CDA, I, I'm with you, consolidate virtual, I mean, consolidate digital learning. I mean, there's a lot. I mean, there's a lot of digital learning happening at the sites, it doesn't have to happen at the site. And there's, you can have much more intense in-person experience, so that, and then a new shore, this is what I think Pam was talking about that made me think, make clients of our families. Have individual relationships with our families rather than whatever it is we do now.
Any others? What do you guys think of growth? Any others?
And I think this is, I mean, it's a little bit of furthering, but it's almost like doubling down in our pre-K throughout the district where we don't operate today. So that we're strengthening that pre-K to CPS decision making, that those families are choosing CPS, whether it's from one of our preschools or even one of the community providers, but make sure that that funnel is happening.
No more, what we need to bless and release when it comes to growth currently at this time?
No, but there was a lot of energy about growth.
There is.
And some disagreement, you know, like anything else is released, I think we have things on each side of the road consistently.
Uh huh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Is there anything, since we've gone over the five goals, anything that's come up, anything that you think, when you think about just in general, that you feel like you need to put on the table when you think about old shore and new shore? Whether it's parents, students, anything that you guys feel like we haven't talked about, captured, have a thought on, when you think about old shore and new shore and when it comes to visioning CPS?
I would just say, what we haven't talked about is the rate at which we have to do whatever it is we're going to do. Meaning, I think because of what we've just gone through and what we've kind of suffered for, we have to accelerate what we're doing in some way, shape, or form. And I think the comfort level, it starts with enrollment, it starts with all kinds of choices. And I think because of where we, what we've just gone through, we're going to have to do this more quickly than we would necessarily want to have to do it. That's just a personal opinion because I think we're in a fight for our life as a district to get back on track as to where we were. Energy wise and enthusiasm and the narrative. I think we've lost a lot of steps along the way. As wonderful as we've been trying to be, I just think this is a, might require impact or kind of a shock therapy kind of thing to get to this.
So this is a perfect segue to.
You gave me $10.
So I will say that, and I worked with a group of staffers yesterday at Skipper and we talked about old shore and new shore, not envisioning, just their thoughts in terms of, in their own space, of their work, what do they want to leave behind in terms of how they operate and how do they want to show up at the new shore. One of the things they talked about a lot is that their real sincere hope is that the, the board will offer some grace and some level of patience with the staff body. And I say that because they feel like they have gone through so much change. And I'm not the board's fault at all, it's what's happening as it relates to COVID, but the pivoting and the flexibility has been like so much that they feel like they really need some grace and patience to be able to move things forward in a, in a successful way. I think narrowing it down to the vital few will be critical. And so our next step, I believe, is for us to take what we have and put it into themes under each of the five goal areas. And so you're defining for us, for us to what? And we want to put that, those themes into one voice, and I do have a thought in the one voice piece. And then the administration will work to put this together in terms of innovative ideas that are priorities aligned to what you've given us and the how, which would be the I will say that out of the five goal areas, there's one that I really believe needs a little bit more time and conversation around to get real clarity on, and that is the growth thing. And the reason I say that is because I've heard views that are very different. And this one is a critical one in terms of, are you staying, do I want to look for more property or not? And so that's a big one that I do think that we need to be able to, to hear from you to know what to do in terms of direction. To build out a CDA or virtual opportunities is great and we can go down that road, but that's very different than telling us to go and buy a little bit or are you telling us to do both things? So that's the area I think that we need a lot of clarity around out of the five.
Yeah, and I, so two things you said, one thing about the grace to the staff, I totally get that. But I'll also say, I've heard so many times, I was told, the board told us to go do this. And I'm like, what? Well, the principal said, the board said, da, 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 da. And I'm like, I can tell you, it was nothing we discussed. And one was, there's a task force, a wellness health about the future of schools. Well, we were told, the board told us to do this, and so the board this. And I'm like, I don't know that the board's sitting around saying, you know, I think there's a nice filter or we haven't done that. So I definitely think, give them the grace. And if there's things that they feel like we're being, asking them to do that's out, you know, I, I just haven't felt that we have done that. So I think it's how sometimes some things could be communicated. Or maybe it's, hey, we should do this, we'd like to take something to the board versus the board says you have to do this. And then as, as it relates to the growth and the CDA and all that, I will trust first and foremost, the data. And I don't know if we have a true, like, I think there needs to be like a model that says based on where we are, and I don't know if we're ever going to make any of those assumptions yet because we don't know we're back full time. But we continue to hear people leaving the district, so we made some assumptions on how many of those we think will be back, combined with what our typical growth rate has been. I wonder today, just based on what I heard, like, was it Kilgore, the number of students? I don't think we need to, I think there's potential of decreasing some of our schools versus worrying about expand, expanding just based on some of the sheer numbers. So I think as it relates to CDA, have we done some poll surveys to see how many people may want a digital option even when full time? That would be an interesting piece of data. And then a model that says, we believe that based on kind of these assumptions, here's what enrollment will be over the next five years. We either have enough space or the modeling is showing we're going to be out of space again.
Go ahead.
I mean, I'm, if, if we're serious about outdoor education, we need outdoor spaces. And I know we can use parks and, you know, we can take the kids down the river and, you know, do all kinds of things, but we also need property of our own that we can consistently use for outdoor education. So I'd say maybe not buildings, but property. Yeah, to that outdoor piece, I think the network of the CPS outdoor, they're already kind of doing an audit of our campuses and where it could work within our, you know, within our boundaries. I would, I would disagree with the superintendent's view on, on the growth thing in part because I think the growth thing is our narrative moving forward aggressively. These other four things are going to be very difficult to communicate to anybody about the new CPS. They won't, they're, they're embedded, they're, they're internal. The growth thing is an external kind of revisiting of what CPS can be or what we're trying to make it. Plus we've, you know, in deference to them, we have to increase our enrollment and increase our program offerings or increase the access. So for me, the other piece of the growth is not just.
That was in deference to me.
Yes, absolutely. Because that's, you've had a, you've been saying that, that the small number concentrate on what we're doing, maybe other schools get our kids and I'm going to fight over tooth and nail about that while I'm here. But the, the growth, and we've had a tremendous amount of discussion over three, almost four years on the growth. So it's not reinventing the wheel, it's a matter of going back over the roadmap as to what we kind of had some consensus about. And so to me, it's about narrative and it's about that impact on actually selling it. Because these other four items, that's hard to sell any of them as a narrative about, wow, look at the new CPS. So I mean, I, I don't want to get rid of growth, I want to give everybody grace, especially at this point, this board. But, but if there's a, if there's, if you guys can figure out that destination and we hold to that destiny, just like the strategic plan was a sort of a, oh, okay, now we know we're supposed to do it for a couple of years or whatever, and then of course disaster happened. But I don't want to get rid of the growth piece, I think it's the most exciting part.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I think you said something that I think is critical, and that is, before COVID did, we were talking about, we were moving kind of slowly because we felt like we had time to think through and plan and all that. So the, the one piece up there about property acquisition and all that is not necessarily for us to just immediately think about buying a building, but it is more immediately to think, where are our students now? What can we do to massage the district a little bit and look at the space that we have and how we best use it? But the one critical piece in my mind is really walnut. I mean, we have schools that are overcrowded or whatever, but that walnut piece, we cannot afford to go forward in, in another situation, Lord forbid, another crisis and be faced with what we're dealing with. And then secondly, and then I'll be quiet, is I really do appreciate hearing what staff feel about us needing to pivot and change, and that impacts them. As a board member sitting here, I feel the same way, that we try to be all things to everybody. And that's been hard. I mean, just evidence of what's out here now, when we got three different groups, you know, imagine what it feels like when we walk in here, we see three different opposing views. How are we supposed to feel? So I think we're asking for the same grace and patience that, and I, I would love to be able to have an opportunity to engage differently with staff around whatever it is we're dealing with at this time. So, yeah, I'm sorry.
So the new shore, turn that into a new shore.
What?
Your last statement.
What did I just say?
We talked about, you talked about.
New shore would be, how do we improve the culture, cultural, I call it a cultural exchange between the role of the board and the role of employees that make us really operate as one? It really should be about us operating as one. We have different expectations, you know, board sets policy, these are our employees, but we really should be on the same wavelength in terms of how we think about the work that has to be done, what have you. So I'm thinking new shores, greater opportunities to engage with staff.
Veritas collaboration.
Yeah. Does that make sense? Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that we, I thought it was, I don't remember it being, I'm sure not any of the other goals. You can. So PLT has scheduled all day Tuesday. I want to do it right after this meeting, while it's fresh in our minds, to be able to take your vision and then identify some priorities that we believe line up to what we said in the bucket of theme around one board. And then we want to be able to bring that back so that Ben, PLT, and the board can dialogue together so that we make sure that we really understand what we're wanting and asking for to be able to move this work forward and then come up with the strategies after we've had a chance to do that work and then the budget piece or that's happening at the same time. Yeah. Okay, Ms. Holden?
I think that's great. I look forward to it because I can remember one or two times where we've been able to dialogue with, with the folks and I think that's great. I, I do want to keep emphasizing the importance though of the growth piece because part of our COVID, as somebody mentioned, part of our COVID parameters and, and most difficult have been the fact about six feet. So it's, this is not something we can leave. This has been at the crux of what it is. And the decline in enrollment has stopped us in our tracks about that, where we were going and, and what we were getting and the diversification of our student bodies and the, and the increase of free school. That was part of the growth. The increase of kids who, you know, English is their second, the second language, a lot of those things were really important to our culture and to the future. So I really, I'm very concerned about the growth thing being lessened. I think it's primary, primary interest and energy.
So I think I probably maybe misrepresent it. What I was saying is that the growth is the one that I have the least knowledge of one voice. Okay? That's what I was really saying. Are we out looking for property or are we expanding our digital footprint or are we doing both? Because the, the property piece is the, the big one that we need to be really conscious of and go after. I will say that we've never lost our work and passion as relates to growth. Remember the strategic planning year three calls for three new buildings? We accomplished three new buildings in two years. So we opened two new schools this year in a pandemic, Mozart, and then we acquired Lighthouse. And before that, the school was the Element Rumah Story School. So that.
And canned.
And canned. So we haven't lost the goal and focus on growth. I just need to know for sure, am I looking for space or am I not looking for space?
Okay, to that, to that point, it would be great for maybe the board to convene a discussion of looking back on the kinds of things we'd sort of agreed to and the things that were still on the table. To Mike's point, that there were things that we were thinking about and doing and even, you know, we'd even made a priority list, if I recall, of three buildings or so. So I mean, it wouldn't be a bad idea to revisit that after this trauma that we've been through to, because we were really coming together with some great consensus though, that might help. I, I, I hate to be too adamant about, but I think it's the narrative.
Yeah, we, we hear you. You are, I mean, it's okay to be adamant because I do, I agree with that. I think we've, we've, we've accomplished a lot, but I think we kind of lost track of where we were because we had to divert a little bit. Yeah, I get it. Ben, did you have something?
I do. I just, I want to pull something up first to kind of look for it.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to underscore that, you know, that, to me, what we do has to be rooted in data. And so I think all of us are, you know, I don't know if we should go more digital or whatever. I don't know what the mindset's of parents. I, I think there are some parents who are like, if I can do this forever, I probably would. My kid is doing way better at home. And that, I'm shocked to hear that, but I have heard it. I know my kids, that they, it's the opposite for me. But I've learned a lot about families who say, you know, if we could find out this, I would be interested, is this going to be a long-term solution? So I don't know what that number is. And so I don't know that, A, we have a good enough understanding of what our enrollment's going to be in the projected three to five-year outlook to see if we do need more schools and which schools have now capacity that we didn't think. Hyde Park, we were thinking of an expansion. I don't know, given what I've seen in some of the numbers, is that at a place where now we've got space again? So.
Just to kind of follow up on that, just to keep in mind though, that Hyde, we have not lost the schools that need to expand. So if you remember, we put modular units, I'll call it something else, that is Hyde Park this year in the pandemic. We haven't stopped on that. We also know that we are going to bring. We also know that we are going to bring Walid Hill higher up to the priority list based upon, expansion based upon what we've seen happen as, as an example this year. We know that we cannot open August without a permanent solution for Walmart.
Yes.
We've also been working on the Lake Star, so all of these things have been worked, has been moving forward, we just haven't talked about it a lot, but we're just talking about the pandemic.
Let's start talking about it again, I love it, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I do think, I agree, and I, I do think that's, that's the point to start, I mean, for us to start. It's like, we're sitting here today talking about next year envisioning CPS, and I think it's important, as Eve said, for us to really, once you, once the administration puts all this together, I think that will generate more conversation and discussion, we can get our footing back and where we are with things, beginning to look at data and where in the trends and where we are for us to help guide some of the next steps in our decision-making. So, I think that would be a good place. And I do believe we've done a lot already, so, yes, Ben?
Thank you, I had to grab something. I know I might be alone boys on this, but when you heard you ask the question, Laura, like, should be, be going to go buy buildings or not, and I, that makes great sense for why that is a urgent question, and, and the, the big financial impacts that ride on that. And I'd love for us to be able to get you clarity on that. I think for me, it's really hard to have an opinion until I know what the dollar amount is and what we'd do with it instead, like if we didn't. And what I was looking up was, just, you know, for part of the reason I am where I am on the growth piece is, when I was reading through our fall map data, if I'm reading this correctly, as of the fall map data, about 28% of kids in CPS were on grade level in math, to 80%, and about 40% were on grade level in reading, 4-0%. And on the deposit data that I got back from that assignment, thank you Krista, that was great, the, the share of, of parents of kids who go to Title I high schools, who are happy with the experience that our kids are having, is in the 50s. So, academically and from a parent perspective, like, there's just enormous work, and I believe that we can do it. I wanna be really clear on that, like, I really believe we could influence those numbers. To me, doing that is way more important than adding more kids to the system. And the reason I think this, this question matters so much is, what's the cost of the building? What could we do with those funds to influence these, like, academic outcomes and parent experiences? And so, I'm, I'm good if I get outloaded, but I wanna be really clear about where I am where I am. And so, whenever we do have a discussion about it, if we could have like a dollar amount, and then like, what could we invest that in otherwise, I think would be really helpful for me.
It's part of an ongoing discussion, not today. We're not voting on anything today.
Nope, I'm looking to the next.
Okay. All right, anything else? Anything else?
I have, well, I have something that's slightly off topic.
Okay?
That I just wanna give to board members and the administration.
Oh, is that your thing?
Yeah, my thing, okay. So, you all received this email, we all received hundreds of emails, and we don't read each one thoroughly, so I'm not sure if you took this one very seriously, but this one really caught my attention, because it was pretty well thought-out way to assess risk. And it's using some of our work and the mitigating factors and assessing what's lower to mean or is high risk, kind of like, you know, Dr. Khan's Swiss cheese analogy, you know, so, not that this is the end-all-be-all, or let's adopt this, but at least it's a starting point to coming up with some kind of criteria that's flexible. And not just this, oh, we're in purple, or, oh, there's 40 out of 100,000, or, you know, but a way to look at this and not, are, are our schools, is it safe to get in a car? If you don't wanna get killed in a car, right, never get in a car. But low risk is driving safely, you know, obeying the, you know, the rules of the, of the road. Well, we can start looking at, my, excuse me?
Who's this from?
From a parent.
It's a email, we all got it.
Yeah, you did, but I wanted the board to take another look at it, and maybe not use this, but use this as a starting point to come up and assess risk, and instead of talking in terms of safety, is it safe to go back to school? Well, is it a low risk, medium risk, or high risk? And kind of change our vernacular and assess what the lowest risk is for our, that, that is acceptable to, to health professionals, to the board, to the administration, to the community? Because if we talk about safe, or we talk about going back at three feet, I mean, we could be in the next decade, but, especially with the variants coming down and, you know, boosters on, on top of the vaccines we're all getting, so this is the beginning of a conversation of what we may end up with, could be totally different than this. But I thought that this was very well thought out.
Okay.
So, and I would like to make this an assignment.
Okay.
To the board and the, and the administration to consider a way to assess risk. Can be using data and using, you know, health data, community data, all, all the mitigating factors that go into making this decision.
So, you're making an assignment that we each adopted, but.
Not adopted.
You just want us to read it and have a discussion, or?
I want us, I want the board and the administration to agree upon some intelligent and flexible criteria to assess risk.
Okay, so in order to do that, you are asking us to read this, and are we?
As, as an example.
Okay, but are you asking for us to have additional conversation about it at a board meeting or something like that?
Right, 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 right. And for the administration to kind of take the lead on this, of course, and, and you may come up with, say, this is great, but, you know, this is something else, but that we do come up with a, a set of criteria to assess risk.
I get it, I was just trying to make sure that there was a next step in it, and if it's a, let's read it and let's have time, and I'll leave it up to your discretion when you wanna put it on the agenda, if you, you know.
I'll, I'll defer to the administration to, to come up with, you know, something that, that kind of follows this line of thought, so that the community knows and our staff knows when we're heading in a direction.
Right, sounds good.
We'll try to bring you back something in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
For sure.
All right. Is there anything else? Parting words from Marina?
Yeah, we appreciate it. Make us work our brains a little bit. I feel good about that.
Let's go back to the intersection.
Oh, having no other business, meeting is adjourned.
Are these our emergency days?